Good afternoon. Welcome to our October 9th meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin our meeting with an invocation led by Commissioner Rushing.
Thank you. Join me if you would. Lord, we thank you for bringing us here safely tonight to conduct the people's business and pray that you would give us the wisdom to do the right thing in all matters before the Union County citizens. We pray that you would heal our land, heal our divisions in the country, pray that you'll be with us for the next few days as we conclude an election that's been a long time in the making. Pray again that you'd take us all home safely tonight, in your precious name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the midst of liberty, justice, and moral law. We'd like to take the opportunity to recognize those employees who have completed service with the county, attended a period of time, and we'll begin with our five-year recipients. In building code enforcement, we have Timothy Balk. General services, Amanda Joyner and Brian Wentz. Public works, Magella Fundenberg. Sheriff's office, we have Eric Dees, Stephanie Fisher, Craig Hamilton, and Leah Yang. And transportation, Teresa Torres. With 10 years in the sheriff's office, we have Krista Kahoon and Jody Rutledge. With 15 years, sheriff's office, Christopher Byram. With social services, Tracy Bernard. With tax administration, Suzanne Mills. And with 20 years of service, we have Melissa Medor in health, Lamar Gaston in public works. Then with 25 years, we have in the sheriff's office, Jerry Paxton. Human services, business operations, Julie Moore. And the sheriff's office, John Gore, Kevin James, and Christopher Medley. We also had an October retirement, Rose Pfeiffer with the sheriff's office, 18 years of service. We thank those employees for their service to the citizens of Union County. Item number four is we begin with a public hearing, physical year 225307, urbanized area grant application, public hearing. Manager, is that going to be you?
Ms. Langster, would you please present that information for the public hearing, please?
Mr. Chairman and board, this is the first of three public hearings that you have regarding transportation. This is for the 5307 or urbanized area grant application, public hearing. This grant is related to services that are using our demand response, subscription, and contracted fixed route services, and these are provided by Union County Transportation.
Okay. At this time, we will open the public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak, so we will close that public hearing. Item number five is FY 225311.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is for 5311, funding administrative, non-urbanized area formula program grant application, again from our transportation staff. This grant is eligible for administration costs that cannot exceed 80% of the net cost of the project. The state has a share of 5%, and there's a local share of 15% of eligible cost. This item provides the budget that we are looking at of $236,790 for this particular grant.
We will open the public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak, so we will close that public hearing. Anyone with questions for Michelle? Okay. And take us to item number six.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the combined capital grant application, public hearing, again, a transportation grant. This is federal, state, and local funding that our transportation department uses for the services that they provide to the residents of Union County.
Here we go. Open the public hearing. We have also no one signed up to speak, and we will close that public hearing. Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Our next item is our informal comments, and we have one individual signed up to speak, Brent Lammers, is that right? Brent?
That is correct, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Simpson and fellow commissioners. My name is Brent Lammers. I live in Matthews and work in Monroe here. I am the executive director of HealthQuest of Union County. I'm here on two parts. Just, one is to, again, thank you for your continued support each year as a community partner. We are a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) organization that's been around here for 21 years, providing free prescription medication to those that are in need. We assist those that are uninsured and at a poverty level income of 300% of poverty level. We love to enroll our clients in there and assist those in need, especially those that live here in Union County. We provide service to four other counties, but starting here and providing service for these years, we've been very pleased to be offering assistance to those, again, in need. We are excited to announce that we did increase our guidelines to offer more people the ability to qualify. We were at 200% of poverty level and just went to 300% there, as voted on by our Board of Trustees. Again, we are just getting the information out to the community. I thought this would be a great avenue to share through your avenue, as well as other efforts that we're going about to provide information. For those that are interested, that would love to find out if they qualify and if we could assist, they could please call our phone number at 704-226-2050, or look up information on our website at www.healthquestpharmacy.org. And again, we'd be willing to certainly help and assist and go over the information that they would be able to assist. So, again, thank you for your time and love to answer any questions, but thank you for your support as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Takes us to additions, deletions, and adoptions of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent.
Motion to approve, aye.
Two motions to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Takes us to old business. Item 28, Beale Church Road commercial.
This is the commercial rezoning application from R40 to B2 conditional that was the subject of a public hearing at the last meeting. As you can see here, this is the proposed site plan, 30,600 square feet of office and retail, two access points, and then some limited uses that are outlined in the conditions there. We do have the list of signed conditions that were in your agenda packets that the applicant has agreed to, and a representative of the applicant is here to answer any questions that you have. The planning board did consider this request at their August and September meetings and recommends approval. That vote was three to two. And, of course, you guys conducted a public hearing at your last meeting. You heard a presentation from the applicant, and you heard some concerns from nearby residents. The primary concerns included the project's inconsistency with surrounding residential uses, traffic, noise, and lighting. If you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them. Again, the applicant is here if you have any questions for them as well.
Questions?
I'd make a motion, we adopt this request, approve this request to adopt the consistency of state, approve the rezoning condition, CZ 2018 W07.
Okay, we have a motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foesed? Takes us to item 29, CZ 2020 Courtyards at Howie Farms.
This is another rezoning request that came before you at the last meeting as a public hearing. This is a request to rezone a piece of property from R40 to R4 conditional. The planning board considered this request at their August meeting and recommended, by a vote of four to two, to deny the rezoning request. You conducted a public hearing at your last regular meeting. You heard a presentation from the applicant, and you heard some concerns from nearby residents. Those primary concerns were traffic and concerns regarding the density of the project being out of character with the density of the surrounding neighborhoods. We have heard from the applicant that they may want to postpone this meeting or postpone a decision. My understanding is that they are working with maybe one of the neighbors over here to get a secondary access, or, I'm sorry, to switch the access from Billy Howie out to Waxaw Indian Trail Road. If that's the case, then we would, staff would suggest that those are two fairly large substantial changes that have occurred after the planning board consideration. They went from 115 lots down to 89 lots after the planning board heard it, and that would also be a fairly large change because you're switching the access points. Staff would recommend that if you wanted, if that was something that the applicant wanted to do, that that be referred back to the planning board so they could reconsider that. Again, that's the staff's recommendation there. If you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them. I don't see the applicant here unless they just walked in within the past few minutes.
How many acres? That's the one on Billy Howie across from Wesley Oaks?
Yes, sir. I believe the original request was about two and a half units per acre. That's what the planning board saw. They reduced that density down to about 1.98, almost two units per acre. So they went from 115 units down to 98, or down to 89. And then, like I said, we've heard recently that they may be thinking about switching or maybe working with the adjacent neighborhood to switch the access point from Billy Howie over to Waxaw Indian Trail. And if that's the case, we would suggest that go back to the planning board.
So does that mean she had questions? Should we talk about that?
I guess, I guess, excuse me, Commissioner Rushing. I just have a question. If that's the desire of the applicant, wouldn't you think the applicant would be here to express that information?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding they were going to be here.
They were planning to be here?
That's my understanding. We had, our last conversations with them were Friday, and at that point, they were 90% sure that that's what they were going to do, but I have not heard from them today.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Rushing.
Yeah, that was my understanding, because the one, that is an issue that I thought about, and we heard from some of the neighbors like that. So, in my discussion, when they asked me, you know, that was what I was interested in, if it was going to be switched. I think they're actually talking at the homeowners association of residents.
That's my understanding.
Doing some kind of swap to get that access across your neighborhood. So, referring it back to the planning board, is that a motion to refer this back to the planning board?
That's what staff would recommend, is that you send it back to the planning board for reconsideration. Being that mainly the recommendation you have from the planning board, that recommendation may not change. The planning board may very well come back with a recommendation to deny, but the recommendation you have in front of you from the planning board today is one that's based on 115 units and an access point onto Billy Howie Road. Those would be, if they changed, they've already changed one of those, and if they change the access point, those are two fairly significant changes that I think the planning board should probably see and consider in their recommendation.
Commissioner, if I may, you need to make a motion, send it back to the planning board, if that is your desire. Either that, or you have to vote on the question front.
Commissioner Rushing?
I'd make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to send it back to the planning board. Discussion? No, that's okay. Anything further? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number 30, new business, 2021 reappraisal.
How are y'all today? We are here to talk about the 2021 countywide reappraisal. This is a project that has been in the, from the beginning phases to now, in process for two years. We'll go into some details here about how we're going about doing the reappraisal, just kind of bring you, and basic our point today is bring you the scheduled values for your First, I want to make a few introductions for the staff, my leadership team that's been working on this project. I think they're all in the room. Phil Ever, he's our appraisal director. His supervisor for the appraisal staff is Brad Helms. He's in the back corner over here. Then Robin Mary is our assessment division director. She oversees a part of the office that deals with tax relief programs in GIS. Two of her staff members are here, Steve Crump, he's the tax relief program supervisor, and Barbara Lanning, which is not directly involved with the reappraisal. She handles all of the personal property assessment work. So reappraisal, what is it and why do we do it? Countywide reappraisal is a systematic review of all real property in the county. We have to do this to be in compliance with state statutes and also to reestablish equity and fairness in the property tax base throughout the county as a whole. Have to make sure our assessed values periodically are reflective of the current real estate market in the county, and then the, one of the other key factors is to restore any tax base loss to equalization, and we'll get into that in just a few minutes as to what that implication So, timing of a reappraisal. North Carolina statutes generate, stipulate, three different timeframes for when a reappraisal should be done. At a minimum, it has to be done every eight years. A second option is for the board to advance to a sooner, a cycle that is sooner, meaning every four years or two years, whatever the board deemed fit, which we did in the early 2000s. I think 2000, 2004, and 2008 were four-year reappraisal cycles. Where we are falling for this reappraisal cycle is option two here, is a mandatory advancement of the reappraisal cycle based on population of the county and the sales assessment ratio that we have been, that has been determined by the Department of Revenue. So, to trigger a, we use the word trigger, but to trigger a mandatory reappraisal, you have to meet two criteria. Number one is your sales ratio, and that is just simply a comparison of your current assessed tax values to the current real estate market. If we get 15% either side of market, 115% or 85% of the market, the Department of Revenue will determine and send us a notification that we need to do a reappraisal within three years. We received that notice in March of 2018, which is why we are doing a 2021 reappraisal. The second criteria is that your population is 75,000 or greater, which we obviously meet So our reappraisal timeline, this process started back in 2018. We had to submit a plan to the Department of Revenue how we were going to go about doing this project. We did that, and basically I was just telling them, we're doing this with in-house staff and resources, not contracting it out to a third party, which is what we have done historically, at least since the year 2000. Today, we are presenting the scheduled values. Then we will ask you to schedule a public hearing on November 2nd. November 16th, we'll ask you to consider adopting, after having held the public hearing, consider adopting that scheduled values. From there, the effective date of reappraisal is January 1st, 2021. North Carolina is a January 1st assessment date, meaning that however your property exists on that date is how you'll be valued and billed for that tax year. So that's the effective date of the reappraisal. Around mid-February, we will come back to the board with some real hard numbers as to new median values, average property values for different areas of the county, and give you a review of that. And then we anticipate by the end of February, we will be mailing our assessment notices to each property owner. The deadline, current estimated deadline for appeals for the new property values will be May 25th, 2021. Just briefly, our plan, we consider budget, staffing, outsourcing needs. All this is in compliance with North Carolina statutes, as well as standards that have been dictated by the Department of Revenue, as well as the International Association of Assessing Officers, which is a private, nonprofit association that most counties are members of. So what is the schedule of values? A schedule of values is basically, we refer to it in the office sort of as the recipe for creating, the cookbook for creating property values throughout the county. It's the per-square footage rates, different types of quality, and so forth. It's a large document which we have made available. There's a copy in the commission, in the clerk's office. We also have copies that will be available for public viewing in our office, and it will be available online on the reappraisal webpage as well. A new schedule has to be adopted for every reappraisal cycle. It establishes the rates and procedures in effect for the entire appraisal cycle, which could be, again, anywhere from four years to eight years or sooner. It just depends on how the commission decides they want to handle the reappraisal cycle when the time comes. So what that means is how we value your property on January 1st, 2021, if somebody builds a house that is similar to that property in 2025, it's going to be valued as if it is 2021, not 2025. There could be more or less depending on the market at that time. To build this schedule, we combine data from over 33 qualified sales and regional construction indices. It is designed to capture the value of the current real estate market. We do not project where we think markets are going. We look back at the sales that have occurred since the last reappraisal, in particularly the last two, two and a half years, and we build the scheduled values based on what the market has done. We're bringing our tax base up to the current market. Guiding rules, principles, and policies for this project. Our number one goal is to be fair and equitable to all taxpayers in the county. We want to treat everyone the same, regardless of what part of the county they're in, what type of home they're in. We look at keeping like properties assessed equally throughout the county, and that is our number one goal. The North Carolina general statutes govern this process. Everything we do is dictated to us by state law. We do not vary from that. And then we also take into consideration industry best practices, again, from IAAO and the North Carolina Department of Revenue. Just to briefly touch on our methodology, we look at all three approaches to value, sales, income, and cost. There's a couple of other options that we use when looking at land, particularly in areas that are built out, where there's no sales happening. We have to determine what portion of a residential property, the land makes up of that value. So that's called allocation and abstraction. We do that internally in the office, and we have a standard ratio that we use for that. Land valuation, again, we break the county up into neighborhoods. We'll touch on that again in a minute. Again, location is everything. So, land on one side of the county may be, same size, may be valued differently. It's all about the sales in that given real estate market. Improvement valuation, we look at what it would cost to replace a property if it was destroyed today, and then depreciate from there for an existing property. We have an ongoing quality assurance review process. We're in the process, an ongoing process of reviewing all properties that are located in Union County. We do this through onsite visits, if we can coordinate that with the taxpayer. We also do desktop reviews with aerial photography. To date, 63,500 parcels have been reviewed by teams of appraisers either onsite or from the desktop in the office. Just to touch briefly on how we set up our neighborhoods, we use a process called neighborhood delineation, and it is a critical component to the appraisal process in Union County. It was first used in the county in the 1980s. So it's an ongoing part of the reappraisal cycle that just gets built out and changed and modified with every reappraisal that happens in the county. We divide, allows us to divide the county into smaller sections, if you will, and neighborhoods. Currently, we have 899 appraisal neighborhoods in the county, and the average parcel count in those neighborhoods is 115. The base level of appraisal starts with a high school district assignment. That's the one thing that every property in that area would have in common. This is just a map here of our appraisal neighborhoods. You can see on the eastern side of the county, for example, down 601, everything's fairly homogeneous, looks like it's one color. Move over to the Providence Road area, you can see some color, but you also see a lot of gray, and that's just due to the density of the neighborhoods there from an appraisal standpoint. If we were to extract that section of the map and make it larger, you'd see a variation of colors there as well. So we spoke about equity as being a reason for doing a reappraisal. This is just a timeline of the different categories of properties that we tax in the office. And you can see, going back to 2015, only real estate in particular, that's what drives this process, we were at 99.71%. That was a reappraisal year, but it was also a contraction in the tax base. We lost 10% of our tax base with that reappraisal in 2015 because we were coming off a high from 2008, and the market had not fully recovered at that point. You can see where we trended down to where we are at 73% of market as of September. That means, that indicates that we are 27% under assessed as a whole in the county, not necessarily an individual property, but the county in its entirety. Compare that to personal property and motor vehicle taxes. Those items are assessed every year, so you always have a 100% assessment level on those types of property. The outlier there is public service companies, and that's your company such as your Piedmont Natural Gas, CSX, Duke Energy, that handle infrastructure that runs through various counties across the state. The state assesses those properties and sends us the lump sum values, telling us how much to assess to that taxpayer and bill them on their tax bill. This is where the equalization piece comes into play that we spoke about briefly. You can see from 2015 to 2018, public service companies were assessed at 100%. By statute, those companies, if the sales ratio drops below 90%, their values are equalized at a level determined by the Department of Revenue. Currently, that is 83% for 19 and 20. It will go back up to 100% for 2021. Just, I touched on this briefly, explaining what the equalization process is. How does that affect us from a bottom-line standpoint? So, on the first column here, you can see the assessed value reported to the county by the Department of Revenue. We did not lose any of that value in 2017 and 2018. 2019 to 2020, for example, for 2020, we were given a value of $479 million in value, but we could only tax them because of the equalization at $397 million. That resulted in a net loss of revenue of $594,000. The point of that is not the amount of money that was lost, it's to show the board and the taxpayers in general the importance of maintaining the equalized tax base, so that everybody carries a fair share of the tax burden. So what is the anticipated countywide impact on the reappraisal? Virtually every property in the county is going to see an increase in value. Our current valuation year is 15. That's where five years removed from that at this point, and we all know how the real estate market has been here. There's been a tremendous amount of growth over the last five years as we've been continuing through the economic recovery cycle. Residential and commercial properties on average will see a 23% to 27% increase in value. Rural land average increase for market value is 25% to 30% is what we're anticipating at this point. Those numbers based on, this is what the scheduled values is based on. The ratios could shift officially from the Department of Revenue by the end of the year, but we would still do the appraisal based on the current values that you're considering. Present use value, this is a separate schedule of values related to farm and ag properties in the county. We do not determine these valuations. It's determined by the North Carolina Use Value Advisory Board. The present use value rates are changing for 2021. To qualify for this program, there are three categories. You have agriculture, which is by far the largest for Union County, horticulture, and forestry. For agriculture, you have to have a minimum 10 acres to get into the program, and ownership and use requirements must be met. and use requirements must be met, meaning the farm, the land has to be being farmed and meeting certain income limits, which are very minimal to qualify. We're required by statute to review an eighth of these properties every year, so a lot of farmers may get contacted by our office to submit a new application so we can review that they still qualify. Currently, in Union County, we have 191,000 acres in this program, which encompasses 46% of all acres in Union County. As far as the present use value rate schedule, as determined by the state, we're in Region 136, which is Piedmont Land Resource Area. These are the rate, this is the rate table that we use to do our valuation for these properties. And essentially, this allows the farmers and folks that are keeping the program, their land in the forestry program, to be assessed at a lower rate per acre on value than the standard market rate. The objective was to preserve farmland. That was the original intent of the statute. So for 2021, you can see there's a slight increase in our acreage rates as determined by the state. For ag, it's gone from 385 per acre to 420 per acre, which is a 9% change. We provided an example here, and we did this based on the appraisal area that's down 601 in the Forest Hills High School District. If a property owner has 50 acres in that area that's in the present use value program, their tax value is increasing from $19,000 to $50,000 to $21,000. At our current tax rate, that's a difference of $12.79 in tax, which results in a 90% deferment of taxes compared to the current market value. So if taxpayers do not agree with our value, how do they appeal? There's five steps, five stages to this process. We have an informal review, which is staff working with the taxpayer directly, once they file their appeal, to see if we can come up with an agreeable value. If they didn't, if we can't reach an agreement there, they are allowed to appeal to the Board of Equalization and Review, and if that decision is not pleasing to the taxpayer, they can then appeal to the Property Tax Commission. That is the final level that determines evaluation. Only if it's a matter of law and a legal argument can it proceed on to the North Carolina Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court. Just for information purposes, we wanted to highlight some of our tax relief programs. We do not get to do this often, so we want to make sure the public's aware of these. We have an elderly disabled program that allows a deferment, not a deferment, but an exclusion of value from their property taxes. It can be as much as 50% of the taxable value of the property. There are certain qualifications that are listed here for income and age that must be met for that. We also have a disabled veterans exclusion program. We're $45,000 if they're qualified, disabled by the Veterans Administration. They get that exclusion once they submit the application and the paperwork. We also have a circuit breaker program, which expands the elderly and disabled program. It increases the income threshold, but it's a tax deferment, which also draws interest over the time that the tax remains unpaid. It's not an exclusion. They actually have to pay this when they come out of the program, or the property is sold. Again, PUV, present use value, we've already talked on that. Tax exemption programs are typical charitable, religious, educational governmental entities, if they qualify, are exempt from taxes on this. Communications plan, we're working with Catherine and her team to put together a plan, an outreach plan for the community. We have set up a 2021 reappraisal webpage. It's a dedicated webpage that went live last week. We'll be adding the Schedule of Values to that sometime this afternoon, so it will be available online. We'll be reaching out and utilizing local media outlets to get the message out. Also, the county will be reaching out and communicating information via social media, and we'll have town hall meetings around the county with all the municipalities and various organizations that desire us to come speak to them. Just to give you a quick overview of some numbers, raw data from the county, our current tax base is at $27.8 billion. Of that, real estate is $25.6 billion. We do lose about 10% of our tax base to various tax relief programs on an annual basis, but we are still growing at a rate of 3.14% from a tax base perspective annually, and we tend to be around that number, plus or minus a tenth, a tenth of a percent or two. Of our tax base, 73%, if you look at everything in total, 73% of our tax base is residential, compared to 10% for commercial industrial. We would like to see that number increase, so we don't determine the growth patterns, we just capture the data. If you look at real estate as a whole, residential is still 88% of our tax base. Just a snapshot here of the various reappraisal cycles in the county. We're talking about a 23% to 27% market variation with where we're currently assessed. That's not unheard of for the county. Going back to 1990, we've had as much as a 40% increase in value during a reappraisal. If you fast forward down this, on this chart here to the early 2000s, where we started doing four-year reappraisal cycles, you can see the gap is not nearly as much. In 2004, it was a 12% increase, and in 2008, it was 16. Of course, there you can see where we triggered the first time, in 2012. We were 20% above market coming out of the housing crisis from 2009, 2009, 2010. As you move forward to today, we are currently, you can see the trend, we're still trending downward from a percentage basis, we're at 73% of market. New parcels by year, we, obviously, our peak was in 2006. If you look here from 2013 to today, it's fairly consistent. I think if we normalize this across all 12 years, we're growing at about 1,500, 1,600 parcels a year consistently over the last 12 years. The residential dwellings by year mirrors that same trend as the parcel count. And then our residential sales by year, you can see we've got an active market. You heard me mention 33,000 sales since 2015. This is where that data came from. We're north of 5,000 qualified sales every year. We hit a peak last year of 6,600. And this is our commercial growth by year. Obviously, last year was a good year for the county, comparatively speaking. This year, with the environment that we're in, with things being shut down and COVID, the growth has not been as substantial. So in conclusion, first thing I'd like to do is just recognize my staff, because they have done a tremendous amount of work with this. They've worked hard. This group that's sitting in the room today, we've got over 100 years of combined tax experience. I know we all look like we're 25, but we've been, we've been around for a while. So it's, they know this market, and the bulk of that experience has been in this county. So they know the market, they know the people, and they do a good job, and they're proud of what they do. And I think, I'm proud of them, and I think the commissioner's going to stand behind this. So today, we're asking for three things. Everyone just acknowledge today that you've received the Schedule of Values, and it's up for consideration. And then we'll ask you to schedule a public hearing for November 2nd, and then we'll plan to come back on the 16th to, for you to consider adoption of the schedule. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, ma'am?
Okay.
I think we'll all agree, we acknowledge your information. We set that public hearing for November 2nd, and direct the clerk of the board to publish a newspaper, general circulation on October 22nd, a notice which indicates proposed schedules submitted to the board, and are available for public inspection. The tax administrator's office advertised time, placed the public hearing on proposed schedules. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item 31 is LME MCO disengagement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To provide a little background on this discussion, I know that all of you are aware that Union County participates in an LME MCO, which is a managed care organization as designed by the State of North Carolina. We participate in the Cardinal Innovations LME MCO. There are seven MCOs across the state, and Cardinals, Catchment area, there are 20 counties that currently participate in this, in this service, this MCO. An MCO provides Medicaid-covered behavioral health services to residents covered by Medicaid. And in September, our most recent numbers that I looked at, we had about 34,000 individuals who were covered by Medicaid in Union County, and so they are eligible for the behavioral health services that Cardinal manages through their, through their service area. If particular interest to the county are our foster children who participate in this service, so once a child enters foster care, they are automatically Medicaid-eligible, whether they were prior to coming into foster care. And so that is an area where we spend a lot of time, unfortunately, a lot of the kids who enter the foster care system are in need of complicated and complex behavioral health services, and so this is an area that is of utmost importance to the county and to me and my role for Union County. As many of you know, we've had numerous issues. Many of you have participated in these over the years with Cardinal Innovations. Prior to Cardinal being called Cardinal Innovations, they were Piedmont Behavioral Health Services. And based on how the state is organized, we have limited options that the statutes and the rules from DHHS allow us in terms of who we can participate with in these behavioral health services. For additional background, Union County has been engaged in conversations with our neighbor, Cabarrus County, regarding similar issues that they have and concerns with Cardinal Innovations for several months. This started well in advance of COVID, and we've picked those conversations up a few months ago. And based on that information, and I'll add there that primarily, when we started the conversation with Cabarrus County, we were both looking to our neighbor, they looking to us, and us looking to them, for any opportunities that we may have locally to partner in services, particularly around foster kids. That's really what started our conversation. So through numerous conversations and based on other information that we were able to learn across the state, we engaged in conversations with Partners Health Management, the LME MCO that has nine counties currently and is based out of Gaston County. Partners CEO, Rhett Melton, is with us this afternoon and available for any questions, if you have any. I appreciate Rhett being here. We believe, after talking with both Cabarrus and with Partners, that we are better aligned with the values that they represent in their organization. Additionally, they're willing and able to move forward with us as being a part and joining into their service area. They have experience bringing an additional county on to their service area. Rutherford County started that work in 2018, moving through in 2019, and left Via, which is the MCO that's in the western part of the state. They followed the guidelines that are outlined by DHHS and making a request to the secretary, and were successful in that. And based on recently provided information, a one-year update that they provided to, that Partners provided to Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, everyone is very pleased with that, that move. It has gone really well. It has provided additional services and added providers in Rutherford County that they didn't have previously. As I mentioned, Rhett is here today if there are any questions, and I can tell you that through my conversations with him, that he and his organization are committed to being true community partners focused on community-based solutions, which is what I think we're about in Union County. This afternoon, the action that we're asking the board to take, and you have some documents that were provided to you last night and in hard copy today, is to adopt a resolution that expresses the desire to disengage from Cardinal Innovations. It provides authorization for the manager to move forward with staff to prepare documents, plans, and other needed items for such a transition. A letter has been prepared that would be sent to North Carolina DHHS Services Secretary, Mandy Cohen. A disengagement plan has been drafted and will be provided on our website following any action the board takes, and there will be an opportunity for public input that will begin at that time. We have an email that we've set up, mentalhealth.realign@unioncountync.gov, and we will also begin immediate work with Partners and community stakeholders to put together a community transition team that will put together a plan for transition, and we will begin this work very soon. We've talked to several of our partners, I have, our DSS director has, and the community, and I can tell you that they are excited and ready to move forward. And with that, Mr. Chairman, those are the actions we would request, and I'm happy to answer questions, as well as Mr. Melton.
Michelle?
Michelle, will there be any interruption or services provided to recipients during this change, or will it result in any services that maybe were offered or paid at one rate? Will that be changed in any way with this change?
We do not anticipate any disruption in service, and really, this community transition team and putting together our plan will work to make sure that that does not happen. If anything, what we would expect to see, based on our conversations with others around the state and with Partners specifically, that we could expect to see enhanced services and additional service providers made available to the folks who are eligible for this service.
All right, very good. Thank you. Is it Mr. Melton?
Yes.
Could you come forward, and we'll put a name and a face, and just briefly speak about your mission and your ability to absorb us into your career program?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and commissioners, thank you for the chance to be here. You know, one of the things that I saw on Michelle's slide that really stuck out for me was when she talked about the alignment of values. We've had the chance to talk a lot about that, and that really is what Partners is about, is partnering with counties that share the values, that about putting their citizens first. We believe our model that it really is, and we play off of our name, Partners, that we look to be a partner to the members that we serve, and we know that we do that through the partners that we have in our provider community. And then in the community, we believe that Union County is different from Gaston County, and Gaston County is different from Burke, and Burke is different from Iredale. So the decisions that we need to make are here, local to the county, and that really resonates with us when talking to Michelle and others about the values that you have and the way that you want there to be a community collaborative model, and really listen to the citizens about what they need. And to your point about making sure that the services they have now can continue, or if they want something different, let us hear about those so we can help build that here. So we're excited. We think the model would serve the citizens well, and we're excited about the opportunity. And frankly, we're flattered and humbled that you would consider us.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. I'll move that we adopt the resolution. I don't believe it's necessary to read that, is it?
I don't believe so, no, sir. We will provide this on our website.
Any further questions or discussion about the motion or the issue? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Aye? No? Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you very much, and we will keep the board updated on our progress throughout this time that we have to go through. It'll probably be about six to nine months, we anticipate, so it will not happen overnight.
Takes us to item 32, which is our Back to Business Grant Program update.
I'll take that one as well. So I'll switch gears a little bit for you, talk about our CARES funding and our Back to Business program, just give you a brief update. The board will recall that we set aside about $1 million in CARES funding. We had slightly more than $8 million total. The manager in particular felt like it was important, based on conversations we've had with community partners, that we use some of these dollars in an allowable way, which was to fund small businesses who have been negatively impacted by COVID. And so you'll also remember that this program had some very specific guidelines that we put together. We've been working with the Central Carolina Council of Governments and their staff, and following guidelines that we, that we believe are compliant with CARES funding requirements. So the funding amounts that individual businesses are eligible for were based on numbers of full or part-time employees as of January 1st, 2020, and for businesses that had revenue for 2019, that was between $30,000 and $2 million. And so you can see the breakdown here, again, as a reminder, of zero to five full-time or part-time employees were eligible for $10,000, six to 25 full-time or part-time employees eligible for $15,000 grant, and 26 to 50 full-time or part-time employees eligible for a $25,000 grant. To date, we have had 269 applications, so this has been very popular and I think a much-needed program in Union County. We have approved 60 applicants totaling $620,000. We've had 62 denials that total about $800,000. And with the remaining 147 applicants that need to be reviewed, which should be finalized in the next seven to 10 days, we have the potential for $1.5 million in additional approvals. So your question may be, okay, we have more applicants than we have set aside dollars, so our next steps, we wanted to provide the update to you today, that we are going to work to identify potential funding that we can cover more than $1 million in funding as we see the final applications. as we see the final applications approval rate. We have some dollars that we had set aside particularly for childcare expenses for employees that we're not seeing the, the need for, that we had anticipated, so we feel pretty comfortable that we're going to be able to move, shift some of those dollars and perhaps shift some of the other CARES funding from a couple of other program areas where we've been receiving other CARES dollars directly to departments. We will continue to review appeals and answer follow-up questions based on denials. I know a couple of you had received some questions, particularly about the employee numbers, the 50, over 50. I know that there were some businesses that were denied because they showed on their W2 for 2019 as having more than 50 employees. As we've talked to them, and they've provided additional background and additional information that they provide to the federal government, we have created with Central Island Council and our legal staff has reviewed, an additional affidavit that those folks will be able to sign assuring us that they did not have more than 50,000 employees. And so a couple of those denials are being reversed based on that information. And later this week, we will provide a list of the awarded grantees publicly so that, that folks can see which businesses were awarded those grants, and we will provide that to the board before we post it on our website. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
The final item is a closed session, item 33. It's the pleasure of the board that we have manager comments and commissioner comments prior to that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to echo a couple of things that you've heard this afternoon. One is the appreciation to our tax administration staff for the work that has gone into preparing for the reappraisal and the work that they are currently undertaking regarding that effort. It is something that we've had, it's a topic that we've had numerous meetings on and that there has been a tremendous amount of planning for, going back two years ago when we provided tax administration with some additional tools, online tools, and specifically with the new aerial photographs and flyovers and software that matches up with that to make sure that we are being accurate in our capture of structures and assessing those appropriately. But to Van's point, we have a very experienced staff, and I just want them to all know that we appreciate everything that you do every day. It's not easy work, it's necessary work, and we look forward to a successful conclusion to this project. So thank you, Van. Next, I would, I would actually like to recognize Michelle Lancaster for the work that she has done, being what I will term a champion for those who cannot speak for themselves regarding behavioral health services. I have watched her work tirelessly for many months, being an advocate for foster care children who otherwise would seemingly slip through the behavioral health services crack, and I use that term very generally. She has been tenacious in seeking those services and making sure that not only the children receive what they are entitled to, but also that their caregivers are updated, that they are up to speed on what they are entitled to, how to get those services, and to her credit, and to those who work with her that I will also call champions, they have made the difference in many lives in Union County, and I appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Lastly, you, you all got a, an urgent update from me on, on Friday regarding a situation that was developing. Out at our Patton Avenue facility, we had some power spikes that created a fire in some surge protectors. And if it were not for the quick thinking of the employees in that building who were not in the room where the fire actually started, but became aware of, of it very quickly, their quick thinking to get the appropriate equipment and put that fire out, follow the training that they had received, the situation would have been a lot worse than it was. Fortunately, we only suffered a good bit of smoke damage and, and a little bit of burn damage in a cubicle we experienced, to their credit also. They are, well, let me just say that our, our senior transportation, rural transportation system is an incredibly busy place. If you've ever been in that office, if you've ever been over to Patton Avenue, which I try to get over to Patton Avenue at least once a week, it is like a beehive of activity. Vans returning from trips, vans departing for trips, dispatching calls with clients that need to receive services, all those types of things, beehive of activity. And while we, we were distracted by the fire that occurred, that team quickly regrouped. We gathered up equipment and we relocated temporarily to another facility, and which we have had practice during COVID. You know, we were able to, to, to work remotely, so they knew what they had to do to continue that, delivering those services without disruption. They did that. We had very little service disruption. They're 100% back in the office now. Today, I checked on them at lunchtime, but it was to their quick thinking and following the training that they got that we were able to come through that. And I just want to recognize them for really saving our facility on Friday.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Helms?
Yes, I'd also like to thank Van's staff as a realtor. I understand the complexity of the appraisal process, and thank you for all your hard work. For the past four days, I've had the opportunity to speak to a lot of our citizens in the voting lines. A lot of people have turned out, there's been thousands, about 21,000 as of yesterday, and it was busy today, I can tell you, I was out there this morning. I would just like to encourage all of our citizens to come out and vote their choice, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
No comment.
Mr. Rush?
No comment.
Mr. Agnes?
Thank you. I also want to thank Michelle for her work over the past eight years, both with Piedmont Health, Behavioral, whatever the heck it was, and Cardinal. You know, there, there's always been a nagging question about the quality of the services that have been received by the citizens of this county. I am very proud of Michelle for her hard work and keeping her finger on the pulse of this situation, sourcing a, a good alternative, and I believe that the partnership with Partners will, will go to serve the citizens of this county in a positive way for many years to come. So Michelle, thank you for your, your tenacity and your hard work in that, and I appreciate that very much, as do the, the most vulnerable citizens of this county. So with that, I wish everyone a good evening.
Thank you. I have no further comments. At this time, I will move that the board go into closed session for the following purposes in accordance with General Statute 143, 31811A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives, and in accordance with General Statute 143, 31811A3, to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to consider and give instructions concerning the handling of the following judicial action. Lenora Carolinas versus Union County, number 16, CBS 2654 Consolidated, and in accordance with General Statute 143, 31811A1, to prevent the disclosure, disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute 143, 31810E. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. I'll move that we adopt the resolution. I don't believe it's necessary to read that, is it?
I don't believe so, no, sir. We will provide this on our website.
Any further questions or discussion about the motion or the concern, the issue? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Aye?